Good morning, everyone. I would like to call the Calbright College Board of Trustees meeting to order this morning on January 23 at exactly 9:00 a.m. And before the meeting gets started, I'd like to ask our board liaison to review the meeting procedures and protocols.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us. I am Teri Lucas, Board Liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our board meeting agenda on Board Docs. The link can be found on our website, calbright.org/board. For attendees who wish to make public comment in person, please fill out a public comment card and submit to the board liaison. For attendees who participate remotely, please use the Q&amp;A feature on Zoom to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comments should be used to address today's agenda. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded.
Great, thank you. With that, will you please call the roll?
Hildegard Agüinaldo.
Present.
Darius Anderson. Adrian Brown.
Present.
Casey Chang.
Present.
Amy Costa.
Here.
Felicia Escobar-Curio.
Present.
Tom Epstein.
Here.
Jolena Grande.
Here.
Pam Haynes.
Here.
Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis.
Present.
Harry LaGrand.
Here.
Paul Medina.
Here.
Jennifer Perry.
Here.
Bill Rawlings.
Here.
Mary Salas.
Here.
Los Villalobos. And Joseph Williams. We have quorum. President Costa.
Thanks so much. With that, I'd like to ask our colleague, trustee LaGrande, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you so much. Next up, a brief discussion of the order of the agenda. I do want to note, members, that action item 4.2 has been pulled from our agenda this morning and will be considered at a later meeting date. With that, is there any other discussion on the order of the agenda? Okay. Seeing none, I will briefly have my president's report and then send it over to our CEO. So I'm excited about a couple of items today that we're going to be discussing as part of our business. For those of us who have been with Calbright for the beginning, it truly is a remarkable, transformative arc that we've been a part of. We obviously have our next strategic plan that we're going to be discussing, as well as several really significant technological contracts that will impact how Calbright students, our faculty, and our staff kind of work. And I think it's truly remarkable to me just the maturity of this organization and some of the systems and processes that we've been able to put in place. And I think it's really reflective in our agenda today. With that, I'll turn it over to our CEO for her comments.
Thank you, President Costa, Vice President Agüinaldo, and members of the Calbright College Board of Trustees. You guys have heard me say over the years that Calbright is a different institution today than it was six months ago, and it will be again a different institution six months from now. Amidst that progress, there are milestone accomplishments across the college that both define and really illustrate our growth. We surpassed an enrollment of 1,000, then 2,000, and now we're approaching 4,000. The Calbright team elapsed 100 faculty and staff last year, and we're now driving towards 200. We received accreditation. We launched as a .edu. We satisfied nearly all of the state auditor's recommendations, and we've launched two new programs in the past four months with another scheduled in March. We've created new partnerships, and partnerships that actually focus and accelerate student success. And as the Chronicle of Higher Education put it, "Calbright found its stride." And so today, I'm pleased to bring to the board Calbright's 2024-2027 strategic vision, which will be our first action item on the agenda today. The vision provides a framework for our institutional and department priorities over the next four years, and it not only outlines goals and metrics, but also our values and our orientation for how we'll work together to champion these focus areas. True to these values, it grows out of engagement with staff, faculty, students, Calbright affinity groups, board workshops, study sessions, and input from external partners and state government, and education advocacy, philanthropic leaders, the policy community. But above all else, what it does is it places students and their needs and their goals at the center of our decision-making. It advances the system's Vision 2030 roadmap and is designed to amplify and be in service of the chancellor's priorities for the system. So I'd personally like to thank the board, the entire Calbright team, and all of those across the state who have supported our mission and the creation of our strategic vision. As the leading edge of the learning curve for solving this complex equation of how best to nurture adult learner success, Calbright's accomplishments and the path forward are critical to the state of California's long-term success. And as you can see on today's agenda, our strategic vision is the initial catalyst for a series of items for board consideration. We're seeking approval to move forward with a new learning management system and for an agreement to support our technology lending library, which a majority of our students utilize. I'm also excited for a presentation and discussion regarding our Student Success Initiative with UC Irvine and Ideas 42. Thus far, we're seeing very promising results, which really compound on one another as we continue to evaluate, to iterate, and to improve our student services and operations. Again, thank you to the Board of Trustees for your partnership. Today marks yet another milestone in Calbright's evolution, and I'm very excited to dive into this new chapter. Thank you, President Costa. This concludes my remarks.
Thank you so much for your remarks. Board members, the board will now move into closed session. We have two items on the closed session agenda. One is a conference with labor negotiators, and two, an employee discipline dismissal release. We expect our closed session to take roughly 45 minutes, and then we'll reconvene in open session. Thanks so much. Great, thank you. I realized I was remiss, and when we broke for closed session, I did not ask if there was any public comment on the closed session, so I will open public comment at this time.
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Great, thank you. And I have no reportable items coming out of closed session. Next up, we have our consent agenda, which is Section 3 of our agenda. Do any trustees wish to remove any item from the consent agenda or discussion for a separate vote? Seeing none, is there any public comments on our consent agenda?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
With that, colleagues, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Move.
Second.
Great, we have a motion in a second with that. Can you please call the roll?
Hildegard Agüinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar-Curio.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Here.
Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis.
Aye.
Harry LaGrand.
Aye.
Paul Medina.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Mary Salas.
Aye.
Los Villalobos.
Aye.
And Joseph Williams. Motion carries, President Costa.
Thank you so much. Next, we're moving on to the action part of our agenda. We have up first item 4.1, which we referenced in some of our opening comments, and it's the Calbright College 24-27 strategic vision.
Good morning. Your mic's not on.
I'll say that again for the record here. Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Agüinaldo. I'm Brendan O'Callaghan, Vice President of Marketing, Communications, and External Affairs at Calbright. And this morning, I am pleased to present to the board Calbright's 2024-2027 strategic vision. And so I've prepared a little presentation here to walk through kind of the components of it, but I wanted to, kind of while that's loading here, talk a little bit about some context around it. You know, as we heard earlier today, we're a different institution today than we were two years ago, than we were three years ago, and we're in a different place. And I also talk about how, you know, and what we're learning, what we're accomplishing, all of our milestones, they carry merit within the community colleges system and kind of the overall goal of serving adult learners better. This is something that we struggle with in higher education as a whole, right? Adult learners, you know, they, it's not because they're not capable, but it's oftentimes because the systems are not set up for their success. You know, and so that's been a big part of what Calbright has been focusing on, working on. And so this strategic vision... Okay. So this strategic vision is, you know, focuses on four years out through 2027, which is, carries us to our start, end of our startup period, which ends in January 2026, and then beyond through the end of 2027. So, you know, really excited for all of that work. And then also, you know, this strategic vision grows out of the entire Calbright community. It's something that our faculty, our students, our staff, everyone, external partners, you know, was involved in. And so really what this was is just formalizing all of their ideas and all of their vision into where we go next. And so, you know, what that does is that it aligns the entire institution. There are formal priorities, formal goals in there, which we're not going to be limited to, but provide a framework, kind of a funnel, laser focus for us. And then, you know, in addition to that, we have, you know, it provides a little bit of framework for, as you'll see today, and in future action items, that all of these things kind of funnel up to our strategic vision, our new LMS system, new lending libraries that we'll talk about at a future date. Those kinds of things are all part of student success, they're all part of our growth and maturation. So let's see where we're working on it. Okay.
We have it here.
Is it...
We have it on the screen in front of the...
Oh, so you all can see it?
Yeah. So it has to be able to see it, but the other...
It's just not projected in the room.
Oh, okay. So I could proceed if I just look at this? Okay, okay. I'm good to proceed if you all... So this vision is, you know, so one of the unique components of Calbright is that we are a statewide entity. So this is just the cover page of our strategic vision, and I wanted to highlight this as a design choice that we made. If you've read through the whole document here, is that, you know, we're, by statute, we're a statewide entity. And so what we've done as a reminder of that and homage of that is that we have, you know, pieces of California throughout. And so if you go to the next slide, please. And so this grew out of, you know, I want to thank the board for all of your input over, you know, really since the start of 2023 in the creation of this vision, workshops, focus groups, interviews, and those interviews, again, with our entire internal community, as well as, you know, philanthropic leadership and others. And then, you know, that moved into a discussion around, you know, our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threads, and kind of what can we do as an institution to keep building on our areas of success, try and optimize, refine areas that we, you know, struggled with in the past, and then also assess where we sit within the kind of the landscape of higher education. You know, and then a big part of that is alignment with the community colleges' Vision 2030 roadmap. We are in service of this roadmap. So if you go to the next slide, please. And so what that does is that it moves into a framework. So we have three priorities: serve students and employers, drive institutional excellence, and amplify our innovative approach. And then connected to each of these priorities are two goals, and the order of the goals, I would say, is of significance. First and foremost, these are goals that are student-centered. As an institution, that's who we are. So expand multi-dimensional opportunities for adult learners and foster skills that drive achievement are our first two goals. And those, as you'll see, kind of cascade onto the rest of them. And that will, you know, cultivating institutional awareness is a byproduct and accelerated, amplified by fostering skills that drive achievement. So, you know, these are that, and then what the goals do is translate these high-level priorities into a little bit more action, actionable kind of entities. If you go to the next slide, please. So let's talk a little bit about the goals here. And these are our items that we have, you know, brought to the board in the past in kind of discussion and such. But the first one, expand multi-dimensional opportunities for adult learners, this one is really focused on Calbright student services, our student success, all of the integrated support models that we have at Calbright. And so, you know, looking at that, there are 6.8 million adult learners across California, many of whom have some college credit but no credential, you know, but these are people who have no college degree and, you know, in many ways are economically stranded because they don't have access to the knowledge economy. So what we want to do in terms of this goal is look at, you know, we have a very high persistence rate from first term to second term. It's in the mid-90s. So, you know, what we want to do is see that continue, especially as we scale. As we get bigger, we want to continue to see those things carry through. We want to launch two new programs on average each year through 2027, and we're well underway. We have our first new program of 2024 slated for March. And then for every 10 new programs, we want to design and validate one with a sister campus. This is something that we did with our data analysis program with Bakersfield College that launched in late 2023. And so those are the kinds of partnerships that we want to see, not only to, you know, move us into specific geographic regions, but also to amplify and serve more students and help with scale there. And then, lastly, we want to see year-over-year expansion of our career services, all of the mechanisms that we utilize, career services and student support programs, all of the things that, you know, that are associated with student support, student learning, you know, that are outside of, I would say, like, the core curriculum, because at Calbright, there isn't that kind of defined line. It's learning happens in the institution as a whole. You know, and we want to see not only expansion of those programs and services, but then expansion of participation from students. So next slide, please. So this next one is more focused on the outcome side of it, the curriculum aspect of it. And so, you know, and a component of Calbright is that enrollment is just the first step. We want to see program completion, and then we want to actually see positive labor market outcomes. And our success aligns with all three of those milestones, not just program completion. So, you know, with that, we want to have, you know, Vision 2030, you know, calls for an increase of, I think, 30% completion numbers by the end of 2030. What we want to do is we want to see that grow by 12% each year compounding, so that's about a 50-plus percent over the next couple of years. You know, and those are things that we feel confident in doing, you know, and are seeing early efforts pay off. We want to, you know, by January 2026, create a process through which we can award credit for prior learning, as well as badges, micro-credentials, and a lot of that is now possible in a post-accreditation environment. So that's a really, that was a really big milestone for us to facilitate much of this work. You know, and then this middle bullet point, and I'll kind of stop here, is higher education struggles with tracking employment outcomes and labor market outcomes, right? We rely on survey data, and survey data isn't in itself bad, but it's incomplete, I would say. And it also limits us in the ability to say, a student completes their program, what are they doing six months from now, but then what are they doing three years from now? And kind of on those out-years. And so that's something that we're really going to be focusing on, is how can we develop some sort of tracking system that allows us... Tracking system sounds worse than it is, but some sort of system in which we can, you know, understand how our students are experiencing the labor market outcome and the success that they're having. You know, and so that's going to be a big part of it, and survey data will supplement that. So that'll be an area of priority for us moving forward. You know, and then we want to expand apprenticeship opportunities, and all of that is connected with labor market outcomes. Next slide, please. So now we're moving into some of the kind of operational aspects of Calbright. As a new institution, it's easy to forget all of the things that you have to create for the first time, all of the policies that you have to implement. And then also, as an institution, we are all the earliest employees of Calbright, and so it's on us to create the culture and to create our organizational norms, how we work together. You know, and so this is going to be an area of priority in terms of how do we grow an institution that doesn't have the silos that many institutions of higher education have? How do we work collaboratively across the organization? So, you know, what we want to do is, you know, part of this is, as enrollment grows, we need to also scale up staff, we need to scale up faculty, and create the models so that we can track and plan for those kinds of things as we launch new programs. So that's the first kind of metric that we're looking at there. And the next one is, you know, complete the next cycle of collective bargaining with labor unions. And you might say, well, we have to do that. And that is true, but I would also say, it's here because it's a priority for us. It's important to us. Organized labor is a pillar of Calbright's long-term sustainability and all of the success we've had thus far. So, you know, I just, I wanted to call that out as we move through it. And also, it's easy to forget that we're in our inaugural contracts, and, you know, it's not like we have 50 years of history on many of those things. You know, and then lastly, looking at organizational health scorecard, how do we, how do we continue to make Calbright a destination place for people to work, where they love coming to work every day, you know, in a remote setting? And then also, how do we expand upon that so that we're ensuring that we keep building that culture? If you go to the next slide, please. Now, this one, develop a sustainable funding approach, is perhaps the big one. And so it is, as I always say, it's a central component of our area of focus. If you think about what we've done in kind of the first half of our startup period, it was build the model for Calbright, show efficacy of our student support engagements, of completion numbers, those kinds of things. Now, as per statute, we have to build out the funding model associated with Calbright. We were founded with our ongoing funds and our one-time funds. And something that I'd want to be clear here is that, you know, all of the kind of the metrics and goals here are associated with kind of a current environment and assessments of our financial standing. But I would say that the 15 million in ongoing funding is going to put us on a path that will, it will limit scale. We could scale bigger faster with additional resources. And so that's one side of it. The other side of it is that in California, there is no public funding model for competency-based education. So it is on Calbright to develop that model and what that funding looks like. And also to exist in this environment where time isn't the main metric that, you know, we can use for funding. In a traditional institution, you use a census period and how long a student was enrolled. It will just look different at Calbright, right? So, you know, this is going to be a big area of focus for us over the next two years, is to build that model, not only the cost model, but then the funding model associated with it. You know, and so, and then this is also, I would say, kind of the linchpin in what does enrollment look like? What does staffing look like, right? Because we can't, we, all of these metrics, as I said, are focused on kind of sustainable, conservative estimates, but we could go bigger faster if we, you know, wanted to, if there was an environment of more resources. So, you know, so, and then, you know, also, we want to work with the chancellor's office to, you know, implement these, and also understand that it's going to be a period of, you know, refinements. We're going to have to keep paying attention to it and keep, you know, evolving there. If you go to the next slide, please. So I will start talking here, and then it will click over for us. The next goal is expand institutional awareness. And, you know, as I say in the comms world, well, that's just taking credit for what everyone else is doing. But, so thinking about that, everything that we're doing as an institution, the new, you know, we'll talk later in this meeting today about our work with UC Irvine, you know, and a lot of the student support endeavors that we've engaged with, that why we're seeing increased completion numbers, why we're seeing increased enrollment, what are the optimizations and efficiency measures that we're implementing? And so what we want to do is, we want to be amplifying that work. We want to be formalizing it in white papers and, you know, conference presentations. We want to be talking about kind of what, how is Calbright approaching this work in a different way than many other institutions are doing it, and why it's being effective. Then along with this in here is our enrollment goal, which is that aligned with Vision 2030, we want to grow enrollment by an average of about 25% each year through fiscal year 26, 27. But, you know, so I'll talk a little bit more on the next slide, or two slides, about what that looks like. You know, but that's a pretty bold goal, but I think also, you know, a sustainable and, you know, one that we'll be able to achieve within our current kind of financial parameters as we build out a fiscal model. You know, and then aligned with Vision 2030, equity is really important. We want to see students that represent the communities that we're focused on. So, you know, right now, we're certainly achieving this metric, but again, as you scale, you want to make sure that you're staying in line. So 70% of our student body reflects Calbright's focus population of learners. We're above that right now, so I feel really good about that. You know, and then, as we complete one accreditation cycle, we just move immediately into the next accreditation cycle. And so by the end of 2026, we want to, you know, complete the next, the renewal process for that. If you go to the next slide, please. Okay, and this is our last goal here. And so forge and expand strategic partnerships. One of our strengths is that we're flexible, we're nimble. We don't, it doesn't take us two, three years to build a new program, and that's really enticing for a partner who says, I have this need in my community, and it's right now. And so we want to be a good partner for all of those, and we don't want to just say, well, this is what we offer, take it or leave it, but instead to co-develop with our partners. We want, you know, lean into that flexibility. And so that's an area of focus as we think about not only expanding partnerships in the workforce and economic development entities, but also philanthropic organizations and other mission-aligned entities. You know, this has a financial component to it as well, thinking about kind of diversification of our finances, with the state carrying the, you know, the majority of it. But then, you know, thinking also, how can we leverage these partnerships in our work into advancing kind of economic opportunity for our student body, creating access to the knowledge economy? So one of the areas that we're focused on here and working on right now is skills-based hiring and what opportunities right now in the public sector are available for, you know, right now, students are shut out because they don't carry that bachelor's degree. How can we align our work and our advocacy to highlight what areas are really ripe for alignment with what Calbright is doing so that we can create more opportunity and access into the knowledge economy? You know, so that's the middle bullet point. You know, and then also, we're a laboratory school in many ways. We are an R&amp;D mechanism for the entire community colleges system, but also for adult learner success as a whole. And so that'll be a big area of focus as we keep going here. So if you go to the next slide, please. So let's talk a little bit about some of kind of the nuts and bolts here. And so, you know, first, as I've said, you know, a lot here, but the long-term funding model is critical. And then state support is also critical as we think about additional scale. But what does enrollment look like? What do these kind of translate into? What does that 25% on average look like? So really where we're looking at is, at the end of this current fiscal year, which is similar to the academic year, we're looking at 5,000 students in our student body. We're at just about 4,000 right now. So we're growing at a good clip, but what we want to do is get to that 5,000 and then look at it, kind of assess our staffing needs, and then grow in, you know, growing from 5,000 to 7,000 through June 2027. That's still 2,000 student growth. It's pretty substantial, but what it is, is a slower growth curve as we become a more mature institution. And then paired with that, we talked about this 12%, you know, completion growth annually. Is, so right now, we have awarded 479 certificates, and that's much bigger than the 116 that we had when I started in July of 2021. And so, you know, of that, we're thinking, in 2023, we awarded 258 certificates. In our current fiscal year, so about half that period, we've awarded 193. So we're definitely on pace and tracking to exceed those numbers annually. So the 12% is, I would say, like the baseline grade that we want to see, but, you know, we of course want to march faster and towards a higher number there. And then also, we talked a little bit about 70% of our student body, and just, I always wanted to point out that, you know, so our student body represents 52 of California's 58 counties. We're working on those remaining six counties. But 34 of California's rural counties are represented, of the 40 rural counties in our state. So that's really good. About a year ago, that number was 20 counties. So we've grown substantially there. 23% of our student body comes from the Central Valley, and then 15% from the inland empire. So we're seeing broad diversity across the state in those areas, too. And so we just want to see that continue as we scale again. If you go to the next slide, please. So this is the last slide here, is that, where are we going from here? So the first thing we're doing is assembling action teams for each goal, so there's a group that's focused on each goal and the metrics associated with it, so that we're aligned moving forward. And then also, those people are connecting the dots across the institution and understanding, well, the work and learning and instruction is connected to our work in student support services, and ensuring that we're aligned there. And then also, we will be coming back, you know, with regular updates about this strategic vision with the board. It's going to be really important that we not only highlight in our annual milestone report, which goes to the legislature every year, but also, you know, with this body and then the state as a whole, is what does our progress look like, and to hold us accountable for that progress. So with that, I, you know, the action item here is that we're, I'm looking for approval of the strategic vision here, but I'm happy to also answer any questions that you might have in the interim.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Tom?
I just must say, I think this is a terrific plan. Crystal clear. Crystal clear. It, it, it really is very well done and I don't really have any questions about it. I just also want to wish Brendan good luck as he leaves us. We're sorry that you are heading back to the wrong coast, but the, you've done a terrific job and I appreciate the work that you've done on this and many other things.
Thank you.
I'm not happy that you're leaving, but you should note that you're going away present is no question for member Epstein. I think that, that's a pretty big send-off in and of itself. As someone who's been here since the inception of Calbright, I just want to comment on how remarkable it's been. I mean, certainly, Calbright was off to a rough start. There were a few stumbles along the way. And in the process with the new leadership, you've met every single benchmark that's been set out for you. You've, you've waded through the slings and arrows that have been cast in your direction and forged a clear path, knowing that without the work Calbright does, we're never going to meet the, the goals for the workers that we need for a skilled economy, skilled workers that we need for the economy in California, what an essential part of that we are. And I like a lot of the things you talked about in this very well-articulated strategic vision. And you're not only doing the work to serve the students, you're forging new pathways. You're really looking at this as an iterative and dynamic process while at the same time trying to, you know, shore up your foundation. So it's pretty remarkable, the innovation you've accomplished while, again, trying to establish a solid baseline. So I also like what you said, Brendan, when you talked about this is, Calbright is an R and D mechanism for the community colleges. It's a reminder of how the value-added proposition you bring to the system. In addition to the diverse group of people that are coming through Calbright, member Haynes commented on it earlier, that you are serving a diverse population that probably otherwise wouldn't be served and bringing them new opportunities. So it's been, from where I sit, a pleasure to sit and watch the work of this team and what they have accomplished and what they will accomplish in the future as you see the new opportunities for Cal, for Calbright and its ability to serve all of our students. So thank you.
Board member Medina.
Does 116 community colleges in the state of California have the honor of being a board of trustees member of Calbright College? I'm really big, obviously, when it comes to adult learner issues. I think everyone knows that, you know, firsthand. But I was actually really, I really liked the setup of your presentation because you actually left, numbers are very important, obviously. You showed the projection and all that. But the, really the buildup to that was on the important elements, obviously, for student success, on the tangible, obviously, you know, the outcomes, students, obviously, the partnership, potential partnerships in the future, the jobs and all that, but also on the intangible elements, you know, being an adult learner. In my case, I've been in the community college system on and off, but I could just picture those adult learners, obviously, who haven't been here for a while. They come in and Calbright, right away, makes them feel like at home. So great job. I'm really excited about the strategic partnership and the fact that I'm going to be a part of the board, which hopefully, you know, approves it. Well, now hopefully, we will approve it, but obviously, we got to wait for our vote. But great job to yourself, to all the staff, obviously, sitting here in the audience and elsewhere.
Any other? Board member Haynes?
So, so thank you so much for the, the presentation. I do have two questions. Every one of our 116 colleges have, have been reminded and are now focusing on, on the adult learner and, and I, and sort of operating under a number of definitions of who that actually is, and that may be problematic. But within the presentation, you, we, we are supportive of this multi-dimensional opportunities for adult learners. Can you be, can you put some meat on that bone so us understand what we're defining as that adult learner? And obviously, we do have a significant number of them who are, are within the Calbright family relative to students.
Yeah, I mean, so there's a couple of kind of, I would say, stratifications to that question. But, so in terms of what an adult learner is and our terms of our definition, and I think per our statute is, you know, we're looking at the students who are 25 and older. So at Calbright, 91% of our students are 25-plus years old, 40% are 40-plus years old. So, you know, really leaning into our mission and alignment there. And when we talk about multi-dimensional student opportunities, what we're getting at is, it's not just enough to build something and say, well, we're, we're open for adult learner enrollment, right? What we want to do is we want to build something that, that, you know, makes adult learners heard, seen, understanding of their needs and goals so that when our, you know, and to be an empathy-focused organization, one, one that is focused on, you know, everyone's unique story and everyone's unique, you know, priorities and goals. You know, for example, the other day, I was on an email thread with a student and someone in our support services team. The student had had some family illnesses and such, and she was being withdrawn from the institution per just some standard policies. And, you know, so she wrote back and said, hey, I'm sorry I had this happen. And, and the response from our counselor was like, was first and foremost, I'm so sorry that these things are happening to you, right? That was the first part of the response. The second part was, how can we bring you back in? How can we support you in this experience? You know, and so that's, you might think is a very small kind of engagement, but what we're saying is that we hear you, we see you, how can we build to support you? And, and that's what we want to see across our entire institution. And as we keep growing, we want to figure out, how do we, how do we optimize those things? How do we scale them so that, you know, really success is baked into the, the experience at Calbright for all students?
Thank you. And I have a second question. Where is it though? Okay. So, well, one should be, can you, off the top of your head, tell us who the six counties are that we have not yet served? There's only six of them, but, and if you can't, if you'll just let me know.
Yeah, so on that graphic, there, there are the white counties, which are not bodies of water, but counties that, that we are not in. And it's actually, it's not any specific region. It's, it's like spot counties across California. I think the county that includes Susanville up in the northeast corner is one. I think Lake, Lake County might be another one in kind of that rural community. I think Imperial County might be another one.
That one we need to get.
Yes, yeah.
That one we really need to get. Okay.
But, but I don't, off the top of my head.
Well, three out of, three out of six is okay.
Well, and I hope, and I hope I was 100% success on those three.
So thank you for that because that's, that's sort of helpful. And then you made, you made mention of the issue around the bachelor degree attainment. And given that the state, our, our governor has, and the personnel board is looking at its job descriptions where it is asking for, currently asking for a bachelor's degree, re-looking at those and looking at what the expectations are and then possibly downgrading those to not requiring that as a first step, first entry step. Are we in, so talk to us about, are we in conflict with that as we move forward or?
No, we're, we're in the, we're in, we're simpatico with that.
I didn't hear all of it and, and I'm saying, well, Calbright's doing this other thing. It's critically important to, okay.
Yeah, so I think that's been, so one of the things that we're working with is, is the Burning Glass Institute and Lyca House and their data to dive into in the public sector, what, what does that environment look like for the, the kind of that, you know, the paper ceiling, we call it, of these jobs that don't functionally require a bachelor, they require a bachelor's degree but don't in terms of the service of, of the actual responsibilities. They don't need a bachelor's degree. What we want to do is look at the classifications of those, those kinds of jobs and actually, you know, create formal research as a, as a college around that so that we can be a, a tool and an asset in advancing that conversation around making the knowledge economy more accessible for our students.
And then finally, finally, the observation, yesterday at the board of governors meeting, there was a presentation on Rising Scholars, which are, are, are programs on traditional community colleges that work in prisons, in county jails with, with those inmate students just, just involved so that they can, you know, build educational portfolio. And to the extent, do we, have we been able to identify if any of our population of students fall in that category? And, and then the other, and so this is a secondary question and it really is around my, my concern, and you mentioned it, you, you mentioned what, and I might be paraphrasing, how are students experiencing their work-life experience? Which means that we, we have a way of them coming back to us and sort of sharing that piece of it, which is critically important because for many of, many of our, many students that community colleges, it is, we accept the 100%. We ask no questions about where they have failed before, where, or their challenges. But within that particular community, the getting of the job is one issue, the keeping the job, and then the employer base relative to, not the forgiveness, that's the wrong term, forgive me. But, but that still is an impediment. You get the credential, it still can be an impediment with our employers relative to seeing that regardless of how many years it's been. So are we making certain that we are continually, because I, that's something that I think our colleges generally need to be much more sensitive about, but Calbright is in the business of taking everyone, so how are we doing relative to that?
Yes, great questions. So the, the first part of that was justice-involved individuals and those communities. So what we know is that, yes, we ask in our application, our admissions application, we have supplemental section of CCC Apply, and students are, you know, asked if they're, if they have experienced the justice system. And that is a self-identifying feature, right? So, so about 5% of our student body is, I would guess that that is probably underreported, right? And it could, could be double, you know, for all we know. And so that, that is an area. And then two, why Michael, our VP of Workforce, just joined here, is to talk about kind of like our public sector partnerships and engagement with workforce so that we have the ability to track beyond that, because like I said, just completion is one thing, but, you know, we need our students to succeed as well.
Thank you, Brendan. Appreciate that. Michael Younger, Vice President of Workforce Strategy and Innovation at Calbright. I think to Brendan's point, you're absolutely right. I think part of this plan is to both assess and bring into the fold community organizations that, that really have their, their finger on the pulse as it relates to justice-involved community. We've been in touch with the administration, Governor Newsom and his team regarding their plans for rehabilitation across the board. The latest we've heard in San Quentin and really wanting to have wraparound services, workforce supports that scale and that can scale. And Calbright is an early, you know, engaged partner in that effort, thought partner in that effort. But specifically at Calbright, we really want to make sure that our programs are accessible to the communities that you're referring to. We want to ensure that we're connecting with organizations that want to address recidivism, that want to address those that simply because mistakes that have been made in the past don't have that quote-unquote second chance, right? And so there are, especially in the state of California, we have really a, a great population of fair-trance employers, but a part of that is also.
Will you explain what fair-trance employer?
Absolutely. Thank you for that opportunity. Fair-trance employers are essentially those that have committed to providing both the wraparound supports, but also the employment opportunity for folks that have been justice-involved. And so started under Governor Brown, a, a big effort around prison-to-employment, continued on by Governor Newsom. This is an effort, a multimillion-dollar effort to ensure that there's both supports from a workforce perspective, educational institutions that are a part of it, and also gives them the great opportunity to be employable, right? Because we want California's constituents to be able to have a second chance opportunity to contribute to, to the workforce. And so we're plugged into that conversation and we're really grateful to be, you know, under Brendan's leadership, being able to start to track some of those individuals a part of, of Calbright that have had that, that experience. And we want to be able to have catered support to be able to support their journey at Calbright.
Thank you.
Board member Escobar Correa and then Board member Grande.
Thanks so much for the plan. We were just remarking about how, how clear it is and we know what our, our marks are to meet and, you know, you did a great job of bringing together lots of people to, to come up with the clear vision and, and metrics that we want to measure our progress against. I'm curious what, what we're thinking in terms of, now that it's done, it will likely get approved shortly, you know, I know that there's work around implementation, but also just message and getting it out to, to the students, you know, other, other partners. Obviously, the legislature, you mentioned that in the presentation, you'll be in touch with them, but, you know, how are we going to really get it out? Because, you know, the work begins and we want to make sure people really understand and can find ways to plug into the different pieces of this effort.
Yeah, great question. So, you know, as I say, Calbright, because we're a new institution, everything we do, we're actually, we need to document it because what we're creating is like foundational documentation of what, what is happening at Calbright in any given month. So, you know, to kind of initial question here is, so we'll, we'll make an announcement, roll, roll this out following the vote. And then, you know, we will distribute it to our legislative partners as well as, you know, nonprofit entities, those, those we've been working with. You all will get that announcement as well in your inboxes. And then along with that is this, you know, kind of the, the next steps of that work, right? Is we can announce this, but then it's, it's the carrying it forward. And so what we'll see is more board presentations around these things. Also, I would say kind of the, the connection of all of our work to the strategic vision, right? So that, you know, our work that we're talking about later today with UC Irvine is now part of Goal One and Goal Two of our strategic vision. You know, and then also, I would say, through our government relations, through our workforce partnerships too, is that working directly with entities. You know, my, my community outreach coordinator was at an event held by David, Assembly Member Alvarez on Saturday, who, who was in charge of the Assembly Budget Subcommittee on Higher Education, you know, out there meeting the community in Southern San Diego County. So those are the kinds of things that we'll keep doing, but also now be underneath this, this big umbrella of our strategic vision so that people understand where we're going, they can see how they align with where we're going, and then we can work with them on, on amplification and acceleration of those areas.
I want to echo the appreciation that you've clearly heard from the other members of the board, especially when it comes to these very ambitious goals, especially around achievement and partnership and their very tangible objective metrics that are included. Where does our system focus on transfer articulation and pathways fit in to these goals? Specifically, where are we forging or potentially expanding the non-credit-to-credit pathway?
Yeah, it was a fantastic question. So I would say we are in the, you know, post-accreditation, we're in the, in the early stages. I wish we could flip a switch and, and suddenly offer credit, you know, but it's, it's more, more complex as you know than that. So, you know, so part of that is the, you know, creating a process for credit for prior learning, recognition of what students have brought, but also the ability to accept credits that someone has earned outside of Calbright and, and recognizing those and credentialing them inside of Calbright. And then also the opportunities for a student to articulate beyond Calbright straight in. So those are things that we're looking at kind of creating the policies for and, and starting to operationalize kind of late 2025 is probably the, the earliest that that will functionally kind of move out of, I would say, the idea stage and into the, the formalization stage. You know, but, but what you're getting at is, is also, I think, a really critical aspect, which is, as, as much as we would like to talk about, you know, bachelor's degree attainment and that it's, it's a proxy we've used for so long in the knowledge economy and it's maybe something that, you know, we should move away from, and there's certainly motion in that direction, we also need to embrace that it is a standard that is used. And we need to be exploring ways in which we can create those opportunities for our students to articulate beyond Calbright, through Calbright, beyond Calbright, into the labor market, but also into the four-year degree market, right? That's something that is going to be important. I'm not saying that it's happening right, right here today, but something that as we move through 26, 27, 28, you know, is, is going to be something that we're, we're looking at. I do not operate in the learning and instruction area as deeply as many of my colleagues, so that's probably something that we could maybe have some sort of separate, you know, discussion on later on. I don't, I don't want to speak for Shannon, who's behind me here, but, but I think that that's, you know, I would say, recognize that input, it's a priority for us and, and it's something that we're moving towards.
I'll just add one more thing to it, which is like, we're well-suited to it because of our competency-based structure and because of all the efforts of Shannon and team around not just awarding credit for prior learning and be able, being able to articulate those validated competencies, but our ability to use the process that we're doing to strengthen our own academic and curricular work as a way for then making it an access point for folks to accumulate the credit necessary to, as I like to say, carry the football. to accumulate the credit necessary to, as I like to say, carry the football fastest, farthest into the four-year market, right? And so there's existing policy and procedural barriers to doing those things. And part of this process is not just designing the thing that works for students, but ensuring the conditions are present for that throughput to be realized. So you can do it one of two ways. You can sort of say, this is the constrained policy environment we're operating in, and so we're going to try to take some flexibility away from our students and do other things that make sure that it aligns with that structure. Or you can sort of point to the fact that the structure itself is a barrier in some ways, and we have to think beyond the structure. What are the policy conditions that have to be in place for students to be able to carry their learnings everywhere that they need to? Now, accreditation was a very critical first step of that because we know that that's a precondition of acceptance at other institutions. But the next question is, what are the institutions that are traveling down this road with us? What are the institutions that see in our students what we see in our students, which is not the ability to have to redo and reprove learning that has already been validated by our institution and by our ability to validate what they come to us with? And so I see a real opportunity to think about how we set up those procedures and those policies, but also how we push some of the boundaries in the policy environment and to create a more favorable situation for students coming from our communities.
Is there a particular goal that you see this fitting under very easily that we would be able to focus on as we listen to the updates that come forward on the accomplishment of our strategic plan?
We will. So Dr. McCarty, I won't, that's in the pipeline to come and present to the board on sometime this spring, I believe.
Great, thanks. With that, I'll open it up for any public comment on the item.
There is no public comment. President Costa?
All right. With that, colleagues, I will entertain a motion in a second. I have Perry with the motion.
I have a second.
Haynes with the second. With that, can you please call the roll call?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Cunalakis.
Aye.
Harry LaGrande.
Aye.
Paul Medina.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Mary Solis.
Aye.
Las Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries. President Costa.
Great. Next up, we have a number of items that we referenced in the opening comments. First up is item 4.3, which is approval of agreements with Infrastructure Incorporated for the Canvas Learning Management System.
Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and the members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Vivek Vias, Chief Project Officer, CalBright, and I'm joined today by CalBright VP of Learning and Instruction, Shannon McCarty. In the last presentation to this board, on the steps we are taking to building the CalBright learning ecosystem, we talked about how systems, roles, and policies form its building blocks. The focus of today's presentation is two salient systems that make up the learning platform within this ecosystem.
I believe they can see it.
Okay. No worries. I guess I'll just keep going. So we'll move to the next one. So a quick review or overview of the agenda today. We start with a brief review of the differentiated approach that we are taking to building the CalBright student experience and how we are employing it to build the learning ecosystem. We will then apprise you of the rigorous process that has gone into the selection of the proposed learning management system and the content management system. That will be followed by the functions and features of these systems that make them a great fit for CalBright. We will close by seeking your approval on the proposed systems. Okay, next. So we'll start with a brief review. In our approach to building a stellar student experience, we first seek to build an empathetic understanding of our students' needs and challenges by asking simple yet fundamental questions. Why are our students here? What do they want? What do they already have? What do they need? And what keeps them motivated? The answers to these questions help us build a blueprint of an engaging student experience that will increase persistence and completion rates, and most importantly, result in better outcomes for our students through career readiness and gainful employment. Next, please. So to seek answers to those questions, we engage with our students in various ways. We collate learnings from student interviews and staff interviews to build a comprehensive understanding of these needs. We learn of their lived experiences, their challenges, their life stories, and their aspirations. These interviews give us an opportunity to hear from David, who is loving the learning experience but is also looking to get a better understanding of his pace and progress, to hear from Yvette, who was able to use her CRM certification as a foundation to earn additional credentials that landed her a job. We hear from Kimberly, who wants an improved onboarding experience, and from many others who need help with time management or would like better tools to connect with their peers and build a sense of community. These asks are essentially centered around a need for guidance, help, and support through the learning journey and ultimately meaningful employment. The interviews, persona creation, and student journey mapping are all important tools that help us to build this understanding so we can develop the capabilities to serve those needs. Next, please. Equipped with a deep understanding of these needs, we map out the capabilities we must develop to meet those needs. This is essentially a list of key functions or services we must create or what we need to do for our students. We derive these from the needs and use it as input into the next stage of defining the components of the learning ecosystem. Next. And so this is what the future ecosystem looks like. There is room to grow and change, but these are the key elements we have derived from these capabilities. I have highlighted some elements such as the personal learning pathway, the content repository, and skills and assessment inventory. These are directly realized through the learning systems that we will talk about in the rest of this presentation. Next. And so we go from understanding the needs to identifying the capabilities to envisioning the ecosystem to thinking through systems, roles, and policies that will be needed to support this ecosystem. We must then evaluate and implement the identified systems. A cohesive organizational effort underpins each of these, all the steps on this path. A robust learning platform is crucial to building the ecosystem, which is why CalBright team put in a lot of rigor in the selection of our new proposed learning management system. I will now pass it on to Shannon to walk you through the selection process.
All right, thank you. All right. So arriving at CalBright quite some time ago, we did talk with faculty as well as other staff members and identified that while we had a learning management system, there were some limitations to our current system. And so really wanted to have a thoughtful approach as to what we were looking for moving forward. So we brought a cross-functional team together, those listed on the screen, members from the faculty ranks, our learning instruction deans, individuals from student success, product and IT, learning services, and even disability services, and really sought their input as to what are the key functions and capabilities that we need in a learning management system. And so it was a collective effort, lots of good information. We tried to do our very best to align the input with the strategies, goals, and priorities at CalBright, and we kind of came up with a collective framework for what we would be looking for moving forward. So all of this input from the Champions Group then became that backbone for the request for proposal process. Next slide, please. So our RFP launched in August of 2023. It's a very robust process. We sent it out and received four responses, and then identified two finalists. So did an initial evaluation of what met that criteria, and then ended up with two vendors that we moved forward to a sandbox kind of access and evaluation. And so then we gained access to the sandboxes. We put in our faculty, students, a variety of staff members, clearly our IT and product team as well, and we did an evaluation. What is it that was current that we needed? What are the functionalities and capabilities that met those requirements that we had identified? And then really what was kind of the key winner of those platforms? Along that same time, we had 12 students who we identified as a focus group. They were able to get into each of the platforms, both on their desktops as well as leveraging mobile applications. And we also got an evaluation from them, looking at the user experience, the user interface, which was the easiest for them to leverage and then use in the process. So compiled all of that feedback, and we identified that Canvas was the key learning management system that we would need at this point in time. So I'm going to hand it back to Vivek, and he, oh, excuse me, no, I'm not. And then what we learned. So one of the things that we did learn during the process, and this is probably the key outcome, was there was no one solution that provided everything that we needed, especially as a direct assessment framework. So when you look at a CBE model, it is very different, and there isn't kind of a out-of-the-box platform that addresses all of our needs. We know that technology is evolving, so we want to make sure that we put ourselves in a place that we can keep up with the evolving technology and really identify a partner that I think is trying to do that as well. One of the key things that we know that we need is a very robust data infrastructure. As you guys have all heard us talk about, the ability to really look at student success, to pull student data, to note pace and progress, all of those will help us be, move faster, provide better student support, and even be, I think, more detailed in how we think about our programs and offerings. And so the data infrastructure is really key to this process. Integration and interoperability, as you all know, nothing stands alone anymore. Everything integrates with everything else. And so the ability to really do more plug-and-play was kind of key to that. And then we really want to be able to sit at the table. We want to have a voice with our vendors, and we want to have input into what that looks like in the future. So making sure that we found a partner that would allow us to do that. Now I'm going to hand it back over to Vivek so he can highlight some of those key capabilities.
So as Shannon said, we are proposing the Canvas Learning Management System. Canvas provides a pretty comprehensive and intuitive learning interface for the students to access the learning materials, assignments, discussions, quizzes, and all features of the learning system. It also provides tools to tailor this user interface to our needs, so we can make it look like a CalBright system. Next, please. The learning management system must provide features and functions to the instructional and program creation and management team as well. Canvas provides role-based access to the faculty, staff, and administration to create, publish, and administer programs, such as the one that you see. That's a simple screenshot to give you an idea, but it provides much more detailed navigation for all of those purposes. Next, please. So we applied a lot of rigor in the evaluation of the vendor systems to ensure they can provide the desired capabilities for program creation and management, measuring of learning achievement, comprehensive feedback and reporting, and multiple options for interactions and collaboration with the students. Canvas has earned the merit of being one of the leading learning management systems, and our evaluation provided convincing proof of its capabilities. However, in keeping with our objective of creating a connected ecosystem, one that allows us to capture data at various levels of interactions and help us build a 360-degree view of our student, we evaluated analytics capabilities and real-time data retrieval or extraction capabilities. We reviewed and tried their integration features through the sandbox system. This is where we felt Canvas fared better than its competitors. The real-time data capabilities and the provisioning for extensibility through integration with other systems makes Canvas a good fit for the approach that CalBright is taking to build our ecosystem. Next. In evaluating the LMS, we looked at not just the current features by the vendor, but also their future roadmap, and what are they doing to address the growing needs of an evolving learning landscape. Through a combination of in-house development, acquisitions, and partnerships, Canvas is building an integrated learning management system that addresses contemporary needs such as e-portfolios, where students can collect, document, and share their educational projects, or badging and credentials management that allows students to demonstrate earned skills. They are also incorporating AI capabilities into the platform as demonstrated by their recent partnership with Khan Academy on the Khan Amigo tool. They have a well-defined roadmap and are investing in research and development. These are important factors that were considered during evaluation and helped build confidence in the selection of the proposed LMS. I will now hand it off to Shannon to walk us through the capabilities of the content management system.
Wonderful, thank you. And so, yes, that was the learning management system that we landed on. And as I previously mentioned, you know, it's very difficult to find one system that fit all of our needs. And so kind of through this process, we identified that we need a second system, which is a content management system. And just to provide some clarity and distinction between the two, I like to think of the learning management system as usually your face-to-face on-ground campus. It's kind of a robust infrastructure. But for a fully online institution, we invest in the learning management system. It is where our students are going to go to find their resources, where they could engage in their learning, where they can meet with their peers, where their instructors, where they would have resources to a library, et cetera. So it's a very robust system, but it doesn't encompass everything. And so one of the other key pieces that we need was a content management system. And if you think of your content management system as your library, where you have meticulously organized your content, your videos, your images, the learning opportunities, this is a little bit more of a detailed platform, so it allows for nuances and information to be really categorized. And one of the things that we know that libraries do best is really to take a meta schema, tag, categorize, organize, store, archive, check out, and even kind of verify where things are in the process. And so the content management system is going to give us the detailed information that the learning management system would not be able to do by itself. So next slide, please. So the content management system that we identified is called Skillways. It's by Ease Learning. And some of the key capabilities is the program alignment. So, and I'll show you a picture of what this looks like, but it's a program authoring tool that really helps you identify your program learning outcomes, down to your competencies, down to your, even your assessment, even down to assessment questions. So you know exactly if your program is fully aligned to what you want your students to be able to do at the end. We're also able to build, bring in a skills inventory. So it has a direct linkage with Lighthouse, or excuse me, Lightcast. And so you're able to bring those skills in and again, tag them to those assessments and those learning opportunities. We're able to do really more modularized learning, so smaller segments of learning that can be packaged and repackaged to help deliver as we work with partners or even personalize the learning experience for our students. And so all of these features will help us be really improved in our agility and our flexibility to package, repackage, and offer our programs. So some of the things that you'll see within Skillways is the authoring tool that I mentioned, some of the integrated accreditation and skill mapping. There's also learning object tagging, and then the assessment to learning outcomes analysis. And so just to give you a little bit of a picture of what this looks like, if you go to the next slide, on the left is where you would bring in like your learning outcomes to your competencies, and then you're really tagging them to say which assessment, which content item aligns to each of these. So as you think about what we're offering students, we can identify exactly what we're putting in front of them that supports that learning. And then the picture on the right that says the program plan is the program authoring tool. And the beauty of this is when you scale out, you can identify if you've met all of your competencies. So as you're doing program development, sometimes you're getting really into the weeds, and it's kind of a nuanced process. And so you need a moment to look at the larger picture, kind of scale back, and make sure that you've met all of those key competencies. Sorry, I get really nerdy out on these because it's super fun and exciting.
That graph is already in the weeds, but okay.
I know, right? I'm like, ooh. It's like game changer. When we talk about the trajectory of change, and I really think about what we have with these, the skill set and with these platforms, I get super excited. So that is the program authoring tool. So next slide, and I think we lost it up here, but I think you can still see it. One of the other things that we're super excited about is Skillways has over 200 assessment types. And so when we think about being an assessment-forward, direct assessment framework, it's really important that we're bringing in real-world opportunities into the online experience and assessing- and assessing students in a variety of ways. One example is being able to leverage video, so students can actually see like a case and then go ahead and do some problem solving, and then even respond via video and provide that back to the instructors. So it just provides a lot more flexibility in how we're assessing their knowledge. Another opportunity is a little bit of a deeper dive, next slide, please, into the mastery and insights. And so we can really follow students to look and see how they're performing. You know, for us, it's not about the grade at the end, it's about what the knowledge that students are leaving with. And so it's how they're mastering each of those competencies. So we can look to see how they're doing both at an individual program level, but also we can scale up and look across the division. This will give us insights to make sure that we are iterating and improving on our programs and our assessments, and just making sure that we're getting students to the end and helping them master that. And then the next one, this is kind of a deep dive, and again, I nerd out because it's really fun and it's lots of good information that we're going to learn about our students. So you're really able to look at where students are in the program, see which skills that they have mastered, where they might be proficient, where they might need additional improvement, and then you can just kind of keep going and deep diving into that information. Here's your opportunity from an instructional standpoint to provide instructional support, correctives, enrichments, even work very closely with our student success partners to do more interventions and targeted outreach to students. And so we're not going to lose students along the way in their program. We're really going to be able to do everything that we can to help them be successful. And so having these insights, this level of data and these tools, I think is just a great opportunity to move us forward. Next slide. And just to bring it all back, you know, as we think about that personal learning pathway for students, it's really all of these tools that are combined together that's going to help us reach that goal. And so if you could keep clicking, Terry, through the, everything will kind of appear. There we go. So we're looking at our learning management system and the skills repository, just to make sure that we're bringing in those relevant skills for students, leveraging our content management system, which allow us to package and repackage learning opportunities for students, and making sure that students are getting exactly what they need in that program path. And then really looking at the larger system. So can we bring in AI? Are we leveraging portfolios and badging? And how are we supporting students as they proceed into their program? So those, that is the presentation for both the content and learning management system, but happy to pause for questions.
Yeah, and just for the viewing public, to be clear, the presentation covered items 4.3, 4.4, and 4.5. Our discussion can as well, as well as public comments, but we'll take up each of the items separately for action. With that, I know Board Member Rawlings has a question, followed by Board Member Haines, and then Aguinaldo.
There we go.
Okay, we'll start there and then I'll get back to him.
So I just wanted to comment how exciting this is, seeing the integration, especially with Skillways into Canvas. You know, one of the things, we had built on strike. One of my concerns was if we are designing CBE platforms and systems here, then how do the other 115 colleges develop something similar if we're on a completely different type of platform? And Ed and Structure clearly has put the effort into it. They clearly have this as part of the roadmap, which is exciting. But what I think is particularly inspiring about this is that now we're going to be able to use Skillways, which I think is a remarkable product. I haven't seen it yet, but I was totally nerding out as you go through your presentation. I love it, so, you know, kind of a falling with same heart there. But we're going to be able to build these platforms that are ready to go for our other colleges. And being able to take this work that we're about to do and really scale it, that's, we're right at the cusp of that. That's really very exciting. So thank you for your work on this. I'm really looking forward to seeing how our faculty are able to use Skillways, and especially as it integrates with Canvas.
Board Member Haines.
Thank you. So I feel a little bit better that Bill is so very, very excited. Because I am a layperson, trustee, but a layperson nonetheless. And so my question, my first question was about Canvas and to what extent does it align with the other 115 colleges? Or was there some? And the question that I now have is, are there aspects of the CalBright's purchase of Canvas more tailored to anything else that CalBright is doing that maybe the other colleges are not yet doing? What would that look like and what would that be?
I'll start and then I'll pass it down to Shannon for her perspective on this. But the one thing that we're doing differently is our relentless focus on the collection of data and the integration such that all the data flows through our systems. And the objective there is that we want to really understand our student, their needs, as I mentioned in my presentation as well. So that's how our approach is differentiated and how Canvas aligns with that approach is we evaluated it from many angles, but one angle that we especially looked at is how well does it provide us the hooks to integrate into it so that we can get the data out of it into our systems where we can build the intelligence and the analytics on top of to understand the students. So in that regard, especially Canvas aligns with that differentiated approach that we're taking that perhaps some of the other colleges are not doing.
And I appreciate that because you touched on something that I was thinking about. We at Los Rios had a discussion about counseling. And what I learned, and we're in, all in, in terms of Canvas, but we had a number of counselors there, and what they shared was that they have really tens of thousands of stories about our students. The question I then had is, are they embedded within something that we could all sort of learn from? And the answer was kind of iffy. And so, you know, if you don't use the system to gather that kind of information, then how do you apply it to the change pieces that have to happen? And so I'm really pleased, obviously, we have always put that student and that student voice in almost everything that CalBright does, but it is only as good as that portion of it. I have another kind of question, and it goes, I guess, to the skills one, which was very difficult for me to understand. It was, yeah. So I guess my question goes to, there's a graph that speaks to 84% success rate. And many of our students take, they make use of the flexibility and therefore life gets in the way. And so how accurate is one module very early in the process and the 84%? And at the very end of the process, when they're getting ready to transition to certification, how accurate is that 84% along that spectrum of the modules?
I think I, let's see if I can summarize that, but I think it's the opportunity to...
The learning loss piece, I guess, is the piece. Or is there a process when you go back, when they go back, they go back through the parts of the process as they get ready for certification? I'm just trying to figure out what the, what that might look like.
Yeah, and I think in the competency-based education model, because we're helping students to get to mastery.
Yes.
So even if 84% have mastered, those that have not mastered, those are the opportunities for us as instructors, as student success persistent specialists to jump in and support the students. And so we're identifying those gaps in their knowledge and then trying to help fill in that gap. So students don't leave us until they've mastered those competencies. And because that we are kind of holding that line of mastery, that is going to help them be better prepared when they sit for those certifications.
Okay, so there's testing along the way.
Correct.
And then there are still maybe gaps, but along the way, there are help with fulfilling them so that they really, that they really do have true mastery.
Yes.
I mean, I'm thinking of the old model where you, you know, the night before the exam, you rush in, you get all the stuff, but you lose it.
Right, as soon as you're done.
And rightly so, but I'm just trying, I'm trying to figure out this new model and to what extent that is locked in to the mastery and, okay, so thank you.
So it is locked in. And I would also say like the level of insights and details that we'll get from Skillways, because we can look down to even like assessment-level questions, we'll know exactly where there's missing knowledge or opportunities to support students in learning. And that level of insights will be really helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Board Member Salas.
Thank you very much. And my question has to do with the Skillways as well. The slide that you showed where it's very illuminating and it shows the gaps in learning and the ability for the instructors to look at that to see where the student is at that particular moment in time. The question is, do the students have that ability to look at that Skillways graph as well, to see where they need the most work? And I think that's really highly important because to have immediate feedback on what a student is doing right for that student, right? For them to have that feedback, where am I missing something here? Then they can really tackle, you know, what they're, that area where there may be the weakness. So do they have the same ability to do that?
Yes, so the students would be able to see their own kind of like pace in progress as well as the instructor. So they will both be able to have that. And even in those conversations, that way it's kind of like a two-sided understanding of, you know, what's happening and where there are gaps. So it's both visible, both to the student and to the instructor.
And is it up to the student to then reach out to the instructor in regards to that vulnerability or that weakness in their study? Or will the instructor actually reach out to the student?
So, yes, the focus is to have the instructor be reaching out proactively to the student because we know, especially with our population, students aren't necessarily going to be reaching out and asking. So really, as professionals, as instructors, it is our obligation to take that time and create that space where we can help students. And so it'll be proactive outreach.
Okay, thank you. And the last thing I just wanted to do is to compliment you on the ARF process and the depth into, to which you involve stakeholders, because that's not often done. So I really congratulate the both of you for that.
Thanks, we have Board Member Grande, followed by Board Member Williams.
Thank you, and I hope you don't mind if I take just a moment to integrate the last agenda item with these agenda items. And I'm thinking about my own district-level institutional accreditation where they've asked us to link budgeting and funding to planning, specifically strategic plans and the goals. And what I see here is a perfect illustration of measuring this particular item with goal number one, Opportunities for Adult Learners, with goal number two, Achievement, with goal number six, Partnership. Because we've selected or have the opportunity to select Canvas, we've got that level of integration and interoperability with our other 115 colleges. So kudos to you folks for bringing it all together and making such a perfect example of how we can take our planning, our budgeting, and our funding and braid it for student success.
Thank you.
Just thinking about the idea and the conversation around mastery and helping the students find ways to distinguish themselves in the workforce. Is the system thinking about how to brand this in a different way? You think about organizations like Opportunities at Work, they have the STAR initiative, it's, I think it's Skills Through Alternative Paths or something like that, and they have the Tear in the Paper Ceiling campaign. But are we thinking of new names or like, what are folks going to go into the space and say, how are they going to distinguish themselves from other community college students? And I went to CalBright, so what's the difference? Like, are you all thinking about the branding for students and how they could really articulate this new idea of mastery? Because then, like, if you have an associate's degree, you don't really think of yourself as a masters, you know, but you all are using that language. And so how can we help students, like through advanced storytelling or some type of specific branding that where they go out there, it really means something that I graduated from CalBright.
Yeah, actually, I'm going to jump in here if this is okay. One thing that I think is really important about this is the branding is not actually an institution-type of branding. So we think in higher education of like the reputation of Harvard, and if I have that Harvard credential, that's amazing. What we're giving to our, like, the reason these technologies are important and the way we're leveraging these technologies is important is because we have a whole services design and learning engagement design opportunity with our students because of how we're leveraging these technologies. So the brand piece is very interesting because what we're seeing our capabilities will be in the way that we'll get a holistic picture of students is to have more custom career intervention and services. So brand, and the brand that becomes important is my ability as a student to develop my personal brand. And so career services, if Don were here, would tell you, is really leaning into that aspect of really building out how our students, you know, acquire the skills and prepare themselves, not just in an academic context and the learning journey and experience, but how does that prepare them for how they're able to confidently engage in the job search? And so that's kind of the exciting piece about these two next technologies landing for us because how we'll be able to leverage them into the actual service interventions that students get with us and how that fits into like, when you come in CalBright, you start here. When you leave CalBright, here's what you're actually prepared for.
Yeah, because in this, it seems like the students are going to have access to it because like traditionally, you could say, these are the classes that I completed. This is going to be, hey, look, these are the skills that I have, and that's a whole different conversation.
This is what I can do, right?
And I think really important part of this, you know, as I think about even like the Canvas, excuse me, the instructor ecosystem, is the portfolio and the badging. So what we are doing is being very thoughtful and intentional about how we are integrating portfolio opportunities for students. So what is the artifact that conveys that I have mastered this? And then how do I talk about it? And then even the thoughtful kind of application of durable skills, because it's not only that I'm able to communicate, it's I can communicate as a leader. And so in the specific context of that discipline. So even as we build the programs, it's making sure that we create those opportunities so students can do exactly that. They can show and convey exactly what they can do. And then we'll be able to badge those, and then they'll be able to have like an e-portfolio that they can take to interviews.
Great. Board Member Chang, next, and then LaGran.
Thank you for the presentation. I think it was very informative. I'm a student, so I use Canvas pretty much daily. I have it on my phone. Notifications always scare me for my classes. But I was wondering, because you brought up AI capabilities with Canvas, and I know Khan Amigo is a big thing, I was wondering what that would look like in the future for the institution? How does that fit in? And what does that look like for students? Because I think AI is, well, a really big topic right now.
It is definitely a hot topic.
Yeah, sure. It's a, as I said, it's an evolving landscape. Like you said, it's, there's much to be explored about AI. But Khan Amigo is a great example of the successes that we're seeing in this field and in the education sector. So it's, there's several areas within, so there is the student side of it, and there is the instructor side of it. And so on the student side, we are looking at potentially utilizing these tools that make it easier, so building, utilizing AI in the student experience itself, so that it becomes easier for the student to consume that, the information, the lessons, and all that that we're building to, into their learning journey. And then on the, on the other side, where we're talking about the comprehensive support for our student, we're looking at some of these tools that as we are growing and can we operate these, some of these things at scale where we still maintain the human touch, but we're able to reach out to a lot more people at the time that we need to reach out to them, at the juncture that they need us the most. So those are the two sides that we're exploring. The Khan Amigo tool is very inspiring in that it's a, it shows us a success that has been attained in recent months or the last couple of years, I'd say. And there's much more to be explored. So we're going to be looking at a lot of these tools that Canvas is bringing into the fold through these acquisitions and partnerships, and these are going to be available to us through this vehicle to explore on both sides of it, whether it's the student experience or on the other side in terms of the support.
Vice President Aguinaldo.
Thank you very much, President Costa. I wanted to thank you guys for the presentation because getting this right is of utmost importance. This is an interface that the students have daily, perhaps even hourly, and just getting this perfected is key. What I'm impressed with is the high degree of personalization. You're taking two different applications, you're harmonizing them together, you're personalizing it to the needs of CalBright, and then hyper-personalizing it to the needs of the individual student. So my question is on that note. When you're talking about making your way through the curriculum, through the program, there's almost a linear aspect of it where you're marching through what you need to take care of in order to get to your goal. But not to advance us too much into Agenda Item 5.1, but you're talking about now timelines and how that almost adds a different axis to what the LMS and the content management system looks like. So could you talk about the tactics, the granularity, the design, kind of the backend work of what happens when somebody adjusts... work of what happens when somebody adjusts something like that? Does their dashboard now completely change and lead them through a different kind of analysis, give them an extra level of data that can get them through their program? Or does it just smush everything into smaller blocks? Does that make sense?
I think so, but let me just ask one clarifying point. So you're kind of wondering, like, when we when we implement something new, right? Like, so a behavioral intervention, let's say, like the scaffolded schedules, how does the technology system that we have change or alter?
Yes.
And so the the student won't see see something different, but they will experience something different, right? It would be clunky for us to say, now that you're on a, you know, two-week-by-two-week schedule, we're gonna revise, like, you're gonna show them all the wiring. Instead, you're we will have, you would have like a whole implementation cycle where that would be integrated into the way that they're experiencing the content that's being given to them and and how they're structuring their time.
Could you delve into that a little deeply? What does that look like?
Yep.
So so just to make sure I understood the question, it's around the timelines and how does the student, how does it better inform the students on where they stand in this journey and how they're progressing? Is that?
Whether it's the timelines or anything else that helps hyper-personalize the experience, it sounds like Aijida knows my question better than I do, so I'm gonna let her clarify my question. Or Pam, maybe Pam can clarify my question.
We are, sorry, we are, so, yes, we are not only utilizing what the learning management system provides, for example, in terms of the the pace and progress and an actual view of where do they stand with respect to or where they are in this journey, we're also building other systems. And and like I said, that's why we were emphasizing so much on extracting this data and the capabilities for data extraction from these systems. For example, we're building the Student Portal also, where we're showing them a timeline and badges that they're earning and and those kind of views. And these are going to be available in multiple places, not only in the learning management system, but also the first point of entry of their portal. So it will inform them of where they stand, what, you know, the milestones have they achieved in in their learning journey. So it will be, there are some visual widgets that we are also providing in addition to that, you know, that inbuilt experience, that that will inform them better and give them a full view of where they stand in the.
So it automatically reacts to key decisions the student is making about how they want to get through their learning journey?
It'll be, I would say it'd be twofold. So I think there's one aspect where a student could go in and say, I identify that I can work five hours a week, based on whatever life events are happening at the same time. So then that will kind of adjust the plan as to how many, what what they would be able to do during that timeline, and present them with either like the different assessments or the content learning opportunities. Then as we give that personalized pathway within Skillways, because of the tagging, what we're able to do is have students do an early assessment and identify what information they do know and where there might be gaps in that knowledge. And then the kind of content that we would provide to them is like, oh, we identified, you know, this gap. So here's that specific content that aligns to this area that you would want to spend more time on. And then you continue to work towards that more summative assessment or that project. And so instead of like the typical experience of read these four chapters, complete this assessment, we're like, here's how we're gonna assess your knowledge, let's see where you stand, this is where you have strengths, this is where we have opportunities to support you, and then providing that content specifically aligned to the areas that they need improvement. So I guess it's like twofold, where that the timeline is also adjusting, but then also that learning pathway adjusts, because every student will enter with different experience and background information.
That's really helpful, and I just wanted to put an exclamation point on Members House's comment about that real-time feedback. It sounds like that's that's key.
Yeah, I'd say it's dynamic in nature, as Shannon described, that it will present what is most essential to progress them to the next milestone in their in their learning experience and for building those skills. It's in a dynamic manner, based on, you know, how they're performing and how they're progressing.
Can I add one more thing? And the interventions that we do, so the support interventions, supplement then that learning journey. So under a five-week scaffolded schedule, here are the contexts you're gonna make, that's adjustments we're gonna make on our end. So our training of our staff to engage in that way, or if they're automated messages, when and how those automated messages get out and what triggers the encouragement you need at this moment where you're getting stuck. So all of that is very is a very seamless feel for the student. It is not constantly abrupting their visual plane to change that, because that's disruptive. So that's, I feel like that's a, these these technologies will help us to also leverage more seamlessness for the for the students, who will over time feel less and less friction along the way.
Great. Thanks, colleagues. With that, I'm gonna ask if there's any public comments, starting with Item 4.3.
There is no public comment.
All right, with that, colleagues, I'm willing to entertain a motion in a second. I have Rawlings and LaGrande. With that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haines.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Kunalakas.
Aye.
Harry LaGrande.
Aye.
Paul Medina.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Mary Solis.
Aye.
Los Villa Lobos.
Aye.
And Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. With that, I'll call for a public comment on Item 4.4, the Master Services Agreement with eLearning.
There is no public comment.
I'll move to approve.
I have Rawlings with a motion and Chang with a second. With that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haines.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Kunalakas.
Aye.
Harry LaGrande.
Aye.
Paul Medina.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Mary Solis.
Aye.
Los Villa Lobos.
Aye.
And Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Last in our trifecta, we have Item 4.5. Any public comment on the approval of the agreement amend addendum with strut for the learning management system?
There is no public comment.
I'll move to approve.
Rawlings with a motion. Medina with a second. Sorry, Paul beat you. With that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haines.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Kunalakas.
Aye.
Harry LaGrande.
Aye.
Paul Medina.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Mary Solis.
Aye.
Los Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks so much. Next, we're on to Information and Reports section of our agenda, and we have Item 5.1, which we've referenced a couple times in our meeting, and it's the Calbright College University of California-Irvine Partnership. And we have an update being presented by Marissa Bold, Vice President of Sustainable Growth and District Development.
Thank you, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the board. We are here to share an update on the work in progress on the exciting multi-year Calbright UC Irvine or UCI partnership, and to pick up on many of the themes that we have talked about throughout the meeting, and the interconnectedness centered on the support and outcomes for our students and for adult learners statewide. We know time is a bit shorter than we had planned, so we will do our best to be a little bit shorter and welcome your questions, and also promise to be back many times to share more about this partnership as we move forward. We love it. We are so excited and so appreciative of you and your leadership and of our entire team. Almost every team at the college has touched this in some way, been involved in leading and implementing and adapting, and so it is really becoming the way that we do our work. For just a super quick moment of context, for those who weren't with us, we are in this work, we're focused on researching, developing, and conducting pilots of innovative interventions and other approaches to improve educational and career outcomes for our students and for students statewide and nationwide. And this work is just incredibly collaborative, data-driven, equity-centered, student-centered, and really done in a context-specific way that you'll see lifted up throughout the work. So next slide, please. The main point I'll make here, which is something we've talked about before, is that today we're gonna zoom in on some of the exciting and specific results that we've seen from some of the pilot tests, but also we really think about this as the power of the approach we're taking to using data and behavioral science in that context-sensitive way, and really centering on our students, on equity, and on data to really support our population of working adult learners. And just a quick note, that given the power of the results we've seen so far, we are planning to continue to build on this progress throughout 2024, and so we will be back with you, and also to emphasize even more sharing of the insights and effective practices with the broader field. Next slide, please. With that, I will hand it over to our partner at Ideas42, Tom Tash, who's a principal behavioral designer and has been with us before. And also, all of our leads for this work are on the call, Dejou, Richard Arum, Ben Castleman, and any of us will be able to answer questions at the end or as we engage on this throughout this journey of the partnership. So I'll hand it over to Tom.
Thanks so much for teeing things up for us, Marissa. It's a real privilege to get to come before the board again today as a spokesperson for the highly collaborative, highly cross-functional body of work that you see represented to the best of my ability on the screen here. We're really excited to share some highlights from this work today. But before we do so, I want to begin with just a huge thank you to the many members of Calbright faculty, support teams, and leadership, who've contributed their time, energy, talents, and more to this work. Everything we're gonna look at today is really the result of what's been a team effort across all organizations involved in the partnership. And as you can tell from the visual up here, we've been running a lot of different activities, enough that we'd need probably an entire board meeting to share updates on all of them. So today, we're really just gonna zoom in on one of those bubbles up there, returning to shed light on some of the others in future engagement with the board. As Marissa mentioned, we're particularly excited to dig into the latest wave of results from the rapid-cycle piloting and testing we've been carrying out with Calbright. But similar to our last update to the board in July, we're again doing so less as a way of showing you any one particular intervention and more as a proof point for the effectiveness of the broader partnership as a whole. Next slide, please. Now, we also want to mention up top that, you know, outside of these updates we've been bringing to the board, we've been dialing up engagement with other audiences to share the work we're doing and the insights we're generating. Now, this has included robust internal engagement with the Calbright team through things like all-team learning opportunities, behavioral insights labs, lunch-and-learn presentations. It's also included external communications through owned media channels like the Calbright UCI and Ideas42 websites and blogs, as well as press releases. And finally, we've been pleased to see an uptick in earned media and publications like The Chronicle of Higher Education, which have noted the promising results from some of the initial pilot tests that we'll be sharing today. As we continue to accumulate evidence on effective ways to support working adult learners in online environments, this kind of external engagement to help others learn about and learn from our work will become an increasing focus of the partnership. Next slide, please. But I've made enough reference to the evidence and the learnings. At this point, let's actually dig into some. And to get us started, we wanted to provide an update on something we first shared when we came before the board in July 2023. Now, back then, we took a deep dive on a new approach we had piloted that offered Calbright students voluntary timelines to help them map out their flexibly-paced learning. At that point, we had very encouraging evidence, both in terms of the hard data on student progress and also in terms of, you know, student voice collected through interviews and surveys, that offering Calbright students more personalized structure and guidance through timelines could really accelerate the pace of their learning. And since then, timelines have been rolled out for all students in the CRM program, and as well in working cross-functionally, we've been able to to launch them in additional programs as well, once you see up there. And to give just one very reductive summary figure that speaks to the scale that's now been reached with timelines, well over 1,200 students are currently using or have used timelines since we first started testing them last year. But, oh, next slide, please. But perhaps more importantly, the data seem to suggest that, you know, similar to the pattern we saw during the initial pilot test, timelines are continuing to help Calbright learners stay on track toward their completion goals. What you see up here on the screen is a comparison of total assignment completion rates before and after timelines were launched for programs other than data analysis, which use timelines from the outset. And this pattern mirrors and extends the figure we shared with you all back in July, showing that at 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, students complete substantially more assignments when offered timelines compared to before timelines were implemented, bringing them that much closer to earning their certificates. Now, these weren't all controlled experiments like our initial pilot, but because each of these programs launched timelines at different times, we can be more confident that the data here are giving us a reliable signal of the positive impact that timelines and the related outreach are having on student outcomes. Now, ultimately, we'll be eager to see how this translates into program completion rates. It's still too early for a definitive read on that, but early indications are promising, and we look forward to sharing more at a future board meeting. Next slide, please. But as excited as we are about the effects of timelines, and believe me, I could talk all day about them, but we actually want to shift focus to another pilot, to another idea that came out of the second of the collaborative design sprints that we ran with a team of academic success counselors last year. Now, we went deeper on this design sprint model in our last update to the board, but as a quick reminder, design sprints are an approach to innovation and improvement that we've been using to co-design new ways of supporting learners in collaboration with Calbright faculty and support teams. I'll say just two things about the design sprint approach today. First is that sort of the defining feature is its student-centered nature. Now, at all stages of the process, we privilege student voice and need as the guiding forces in our design thinking. And the second thing I want to say about design sprints is that, you know, while our initial brainstorming begins in really small teams, and the case we'll share today, a small team of academic success counselors, once we identify a concept to pilot, they become a hugely cross-functional effort involving contributions from across the college. Next slide, please. But on to the specifics. The first objective in any design sprint is to identify a clear opportunity to leverage a behavioral approach. And that means finding a measurable goal that we want to achieve and that we believe is related in a meaningful way to the persistence, completion, workforce outcomes that are really the north star of all activities in this partnership. And we began this particular sprint by identifying the opportunity you see on the screen, to help more Calbright students engaged with support teams and resources that we believed could help them advance in their programs and in their careers. Now, we know that students who take full advantage of these kinds of services are more likely to succeed in their programs. And we also believe that rates of usage for things like counseling or career services had some room to grow, and we wanted to brainstorm ways to try to increase student engagement with these kinds of services. Next slide, please. So we conducted a behavioral diagnosis to try to understand what factors might be underlying those rates of engagement with different resources Calbright offers. Now, we came up with a very big set of potential barriers that students might face in online certificate programs, and we chose to prioritize the three that you see on the screen here. First, that the kind of personal connections that can drive engagement are harder to make. In a fully online asynchronous setting, interpersonal interaction with faculty or support teams is just gonna be more infrequent, maybe more difficult. Second, that the process could be unfamiliar to many students, particularly those who are newer to higher education or online learning. And we know that a common reaction to uncertainty or ambiguity can be to back away or disengage. And the final barrier, we hypothesized, was that students unfamiliar with the different support functions or resources on offer might not immediately appreciate the value they bring to them, or how they can help them along their program pathway, which could explain a hesitation to engage with them. Now, it's really important to note that these are barriers inherent to any online learning environment and not specific to Calbright, which also means that any effective solutions we might come up with to address these barriers could potentially have applications well beyond the Calbright context. So what solution did we ultimately decide to pilot? Next slide, please. What we thought an effective way to address the barriers we just discussed would be to enhance student-facing communications and outreach with short-form mobile videos. We created three different videos for our pilot test, each designed to drive student engagement with different Calbright processes and services at different points along the student journey. Specifically, we had one video that helped students move through steps in the enrollment process, another that gave students a personal introduction to their academic success counselor, and a third that offered a brief overview of the different career services resources available to students. And as you've probably already gathered, these were not your standard-issue videos you might expect a college or university to produce. Now, we very deliberately created these videos in a way that felt a little more personal, authentic, non-institutional, and similar, maybe, to the kind of user-generated videos you would see on a product like Instagram reels. Now, this approach not only contrasts Calbright against other colleges and universities, it also confronts head-on misperception that newer students might have about the Calbright experience. Yes, Calbright is at the forefront of leveraging new technologies in higher education, but that embrace of technology, you know, far from making Calbright cold and personal or machine-like, is in fact in service of strengthening the kind of warm, human-to-human interactions that we know drive student engagement. Now, we ultimately saw great results from our tests of these videos. Across the board, they got students to engage with the processes and services we were highlighting. But before we turn to those results, if we have enough time, we'd love to actually play one of the videos to give you a better sense of how they worked. Now, on the next slide, I think we've got one. All right. Oh, if we can go back.
You have to go back.
There we go, yeah. And I, and if I'm able to share my screen, I've got it triggered here, so I can hit play. All right. Here, we're going to actually get to take a look at a video produced by Antoinette McGee, who is an academic success counselor we worked with, actually, in that original design sprint that I mentioned. And she's going to walk us through sort of the initial steps involved in the enrollment process, the steps that a student needs to take to get from sort of where they're at when they maybe enter the enrollment funnel to actually becoming a fully enrolled student.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Antoinette, and I'm an academic success counselor here at Calbright. Congratulations on taking the first steps on becoming a Calbright student. Now, I'm going to walk you through the rest of the way and show you how to get enrolled. First, once your application has been processed from CCC Apply, you're going to log into your student portal with the login credentials we send you via email. And don't worry if you don't see the email right away, sometimes it can take a day or two to receive that email after you submit the application. Next, you're going to sign up for your program onboarding via your student portal. Now, this next step kind of goes without saying, but make sure you attend the onboarding. Finally, during the onboarding, you're going to sign your enrollment agreement and begin your program. Now, if you're having any difficulties or you just have general questions, please contact our enrollment services at the number on the screen. See you soon.
All right. Antoinette is a very hard act to follow, but I'm going to do my best to keep things just as engaging as we actually turn to some of the results we saw from our pilots of these videos.
And Tom, just in the spirit of time, since I know we have, I think if we just read the highlight from the three slides and the student voice slide and then open for questions, I think that'll be great, and then we can dive in more based on any questions that the board members have as well.
Sounds good. I will go very quickly, but again, we can double-click on any of these in the Q and A. First video, as you can see here, we did a full A/B test here, and the key takeaway is that students that got that video at basically every step along the enrollment process, we saw increased levels of engagement. We think this is a pretty powerful testament to the power, again, of, it really isn't that in-depth of an intervention here, a 60-second video nudge. The second video we tested, looking at a very different type of engagement behavior, actually getting students to reach out, set up an initial meeting with their academic success counselor, and as you see on the screen, again, in the blue, we've got the video group, the red, we've got the no-video group, and again, here, we see that there's a, particularly in relative terms, a really meaningful effect size here, you know, roughly 40% more likely to engage with an academic success counselor when you get that really warm, personal introduction via that 60-second video. And then the final video, which was all about career services, it fits the pattern we're familiar with by now. You see that for students who got the video, we saw greater levels of engagement, but also kind of greater depth of engagement. So students were not only more likely to visit the career services page, there was a meaningful uptick in engagement with some of the resources that we were calling out in that video. Numbers, of course, speak for themselves, but I'm glad Marissa highlighted the student voice, because I think it's perhaps the more powerful testimony here to the power of these videos. You know, we see students speaking to their ability to help them connect with Calbright, particularly faculty and support teams. They talk about how the videos can address points of confusion, reduce feelings of intimidation, and they mention how the videos helped them better understand the particular services we were spotlighting. And I think, taken together with some of those quantitative results we run through there, this presents a pretty solid case for the power of short-form videos like the ones we piloted to help drive all different kinds of student engagement along the learner pathway. I'll conclude with this slide here, which lays out sort of the evolutionary arc we see here, moving first from co-design, then to a pilot test stage, based on evidence that we've seen, finding ways to adapt and scale those up so all Calbright learners can engage from what we're working on. And then finally, what we spotlighted at the beginning, an increased emphasis on some of the external engagement going forward, so that others can learn from and about the work that we're doing. The final thing I'll say, just a thank you. A thank you to the board for giving us time to share this work, and of course, the support of it over the past few months. And finally, a thank you to the Calbright team again, who really have been pivotal to everything that we've done. It's been a huge honor to get to work alongside them as we built this together. And with that, with the time we've got left, we'd love to take questions, comments, thoughts that might be on your mind.
Thank you so much, colleagues. Were there any questions or comments regarding the presentation?
Thumbs up.
Yeah, you're getting a lot of thumbs up if you can't see us. With that, and given time, I am going to see if there's any public comment on the item.
There is no public comment.
Okay, thank you so much for the presentation. Next up, we have a standing item, which is 5.2. It is an informational report item on our contracts and purchases. Trustees, is there any questions or discussions on this item? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment.
Thanks, Ange. Next up, we have our constituency group reports. We have no report from the Academic Senate this time, nor from the Faculty Association. We do, however, have a report from the California School Employees Association. Item 6.3.
I apologize. Hello, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and esteemed members of the board. I'm very happy to be here virtually today to start my third term as the president of Chapter 53 for CSCA. It's an honor to continue to represent the growing classified members of Calbright, and as we start 2024, I wanted to provide the board with the summary of the achievements of 2023 and our outlook for 2024. So, as we talked about today, 2023 was a milestone year for Calbright, but also was for our chapter. In 2023, from the 71 hires that Calbright's HR team was able to accomplish, 33 were classified, and that's a significant increase from 2022. We also saw a significant increase in retention of classified employees, which was a main concern entering our negotiations during our first contract in 2022. We signed, and you ratified, our first contract. We conducted our very first classified performance reviews, and we now have approved salary schedules, step increases, as well as off-schedule money. We established and continue to hold biweekly labor management meetings, which has been instrumental in building strong channels of communication, which always helps with problem-solving. It was a busy but extremely fruitful year. In 2024, we're also slated for another year full of activity. First, our executive board is growing for Chapter 53. This year, we added a vice president role. Donna Howard, Calbright Student Engagement Specialist, was unanimously elected to the position by chapter members. We also have a new treasurer, Erin Derolando, one of our student support specialists, who was also unanimously voted in. She will truly, really be able to ensure that our hourly employee voices are heard in our growing student support specialist group. And last, but definitely not least, Karen Snow, our senior research analyst, is going into her third year as Secretary of the Union, demonstrating her longtime commitment to her union siblings and the success of Calbright. Also, super excited that Acacia Hill, another student support specialist, is currently going through our training to become our very first union steward. There is a marked increase in participation in union activities, and that's really promising both for the future of our chapter and the college. We're also very proud to announce that we have a new labor representative, Matthew Korn, who in his short-term time with us, has already built strong relationships and has demonstrated[1735.75]